Downtown Orlando. This is still fair free, as we all like to say at least. And for the first time, you will no longer have to.
Okay, it appears to be 5:01 or after. So we will begin the first of our two public hearings related to the budget for the city and the DDB and the NID. Since March, we've been holding public work sessions that have taken an in-depth look at the city's budget for fiscal year 14 and 15, and we have focused on the fact that we have had declining revenues since 2009. In 2009, the City of Orlando generated $137 million in ad valorem property tax revenues, and in the current fiscal year, the city will generate 102 million. So if you do the elementary math, that's a drop of roughly $35 million, or the entire size of the budget for the city's Family Parks and Recreation Department. These workshops have outlined how the city has made dramatic cuts to the budget. In fact, since 2002, we have cut 379 million from the general fund budget. In the upcoming fiscal year, we will cut 17.5 from the general fund. City has maintained the same millage rate since 2009. Despite having the same millage rate, the revenue produced by the property taxes has declined. In 2009, at a 5.65 millage rate, the city budget included 137 million in property taxes. In 2015, without a millage rate change, property taxes generated would produce 109 million. With an adjusted millage rate of 6.65, it'll be an estimated 128 million, which is still significantly less than the revenue generated in 2009. So we are going to begin with the first of two public hearings for the adoption of the millage rate and budget for the City of Orlando for the fiscal year 2014-15. At this first hearing, City Council will consider for adoption the proposed millage rate and tentative budget. At the second hearing, City Council will consider for adoption the final millage rate and budget. Madam Clerk, would you read the title of the millage resolution?
Resolution of the City of Orlando, Florida Establishing the Ad Valorem Tax Levy Millage Rate Upon the Assessed Real Property and Business Personal Property Tax Rolls of the Year 2014.
The proposed millage rate for the city for fiscal year 2014-2015 is 6.65 mils, which is 23.2 percent higher than the rollback rate of 5.3977. It's our motion to adopt the proposed millage rate.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, is there a second?
I made the motion, Mayor.
No, second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Sheehan made the motion, Commissioner Hill made the second. Rebecca, would you, do you have some words of wisdom you would like to offer?
We'll just do a quick summary. On July 28, the City Council approved a preliminary millage rate of $6.65 per thousand dollars of valuation, so that the appropriate filing could be made with the property appraiser by the August 1 deadline set for the TRIM notification process. The millage rate is within the parameters outlined by the state formula, and is being increased to provide the revenue necessary to maintain the city's current levels of service.
I think this would be the appropriate time. Our property appraiser, Rick Singh, is with us, here with us today. So before I go to public comment, I would ask the property appraiser to give us what information he would like tonight.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mayor and Commissioners, and of course, your very able staff. I'm very honored and privileged to appear before you and to give you a report on the state of real estate, and very quickly, the county, but more importantly, and more germane to your discussion here today, the city of Orlando. The county overall saw an increase in total market value of about 10 percent, and taxable value more in line of 7 percent. As you may know, we have close to half a million parcels of property, 433,000 of parcels, and we also have 64,000 of tangible personal property. Overall increase across the county, every municipality saw some type of revenue growth. I'd like to talk to you about the valuation of the city of Orlando, some tremendous growth as a result of your hard work and dedication. 91,000 parcels, 34,000 homesteaded, 19,000 tangible personal property. You also saw a tremendous amount of new construction in the city of Orlando. I think, Mayor, you can very aggressively say that in the city of Orlando, as a result of the hard work, the residents can recognize $1.1 million of new construction every day in the city of Orlando, to the tune of $400 million. So it's very significant. That's basically it. You've seen a tremendous amount of growth. Parcel counts remain consistent, and we are projecting for the next year the very similar type of growth in Orange County with regards to valuation. Again, your job is very difficult. It's a moving ball, and you've got to kind of stay ahead of it, and I empathize with your position today. But I'm available for questions, and my staff is outside to answer any questions to the public or yourselves. Thank you so much for the consideration and opportunity to speak to you today.
Okay, thank you. And sometimes people receive your documents in the mail and come to City Council to ask us questions, so thank you for being here with your staff to answer any of those questions that may come up tonight. Okay, I would open the meeting for public comment, and I do have eight appearance request cards. The way we're going to go about this is we'll have the city budget hearing, the DDB budget hearing, and the NID budget hearing, and we will take testimony on the millage rate, and then we'll move on to the budget. So this is the millage rate part. But it looks to me like everybody indicated they wanted to speak on item one, which was the city budget and/or millage rate. So if you want to, at this point, just speak on either one of those when you come up, that is fine. Elizabeth Slade.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Slade. I'm born in Orlando in 1961, one of the few, just a couple of miles from here. I've owned property in Orlando since 1983. I currently own a commercial property on the corner of Edgewater Drive and All-American Boulevard. It's a very difficult time to be a landlord right now, and to justify any increase at all towards our tenants. And I have a problem right now with a 12.5 percent increase in property taxes on my building. It's a lot of money. And I also have a problem with the fact that I think there's an additional tax that is maybe unspoken about, but code enforcement and permitting have become very, very, very difficult to deal with. And it has cost me a lot of money over time, and I just want to let my objections be known. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Michael Dobson, and then Victor Vermillion. I may not have that right, Michael.
My name is Michael Dobish, and I live at 9645 Sweet Leaf Street, down North Lake Park at Lake Nona. I find this is an interesting time for the city to propose a budget increase or a tax increase of, I had 18 percent. I like the mayor's number of 23 percent better, so I appreciate that number. Substantial increase in a time, we live in a time where everyone in this room, I'm sure, is economically recovering. Me as well. It's the weakest recovery this country has ever seen, and for us to put a tax increase of 23 percent, I'm just scratching my head and trying to understand. I found Rick Singh's brief report on real estate rather encouraging. $1.1 million a day is being spent within the city limits on real estate, which at some point will directly impact the city in a positive fashion, so I think that's outstanding. I would respectfully request the people here to rethink their position on passing such a large tax increase. Let's maybe consider it the next year. You have people that are losing their homes, about to lose their homes. Every dollar is counting for a lot of people, and if you keep the taxes where they are, I think those people will appreciate it. And if you do keep them where they are, I hope they take the time to come down here and thank you in some way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor Vermillion, and then Greg Reynolds.
Thank you, thank you. My name is Victor Vermillion. I live at 3619 Finch Street in Orlando, Florida. That's the Autumn Park area. I too, like the other two gentlemen, or lady and gentleman preceding me, is, I object to this unacceptable tax rate. The city is raising my taxes 17.7 percent, and the value, after all the exemptions and so forth, is going up about 2.5 percent. So I'm getting about a 20.3 percent tax increase. That is just, I don't see how you folks can defend something like that. Mr. Singh just said that the value has gone up 7 percent. My goodness, we're in an inflationary, or a deflationary time almost, where inflation may be 2 percent. Probably, we could come up with figures of 1 percent or less. We may be going in a deflationary economy, and you folks are asking for 20 percent? Come on. I don't accept that. So I would really consider, or I would wish that all of you folks on this board would consider or reconsider any tax increases above inflation. I know you've had some hard times. I have too. And I've tightened my belt, and I expect you to, as city officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Reynolds, and then Doug Head.
Hello, my name is Greg Reynolds. I live at 322 East Central Boulevard here in downtown Orlando. I have Celeste Thomas here with me, and we both are on the Family Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And it's an honor, and Mayor and City Commissioners, and I appreciate this opportunity. I'm going to read this because the committee got together, and we all formed this statement in which we just wanted to read into the record here. "We, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, thank you for the opportunity to represent you as we travel to the many community facilities that the City of Orlando operates, and to make the decisions to partially fund organizations who seek to utilize these facilities. As an advisory board, and knowing the budget decisions are difficult for you to make, we would like to express our support through the budget cycle that these community facilities continue to be fully funded and remain fully operational, so that the City of Orlando may accommodate these important organizations. As you all are well aware of, these facilities are very essential to assist those in our community." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Doug Head, and then Lisa Lorenzo.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to address you this evening. I just wanted to make a few observations. One, the first of which is that it seems that, from everything I've heard about your budget process and the situation you are in as members of the council today, you've been stretching the dollar for year after year after year through the recession, and now we've got a kind of a snapback effect where we're going to suddenly have to significantly increase taxes, property taxes, that have not been increasing at a small incremental rate for many years. I'm sure that many citizens appreciated the relief that they got, even though they may not have known that they got that relief in the immediate past years. But the shock of this big jump now is probably coming as a real shock to a lot of property owners. I think that there's some need to further explain and clarify to the community, and I hope you'll each individually take an opportunity to do it today, when you have your discussion about this budget, to clarify for the community why we are in this situation. There's so many funds and so many loans and counterloans and complex financial transactions that have occurred within the city in the last few years, many of them associated with venues and promises for massive new things. Mr. Singh talks about the really remarkable increase in the valuation, but at the same time, we find our revenues falling, and a lot of citizens out there, I'm sure if they're watching on TV, would be scratching their heads to wonder, how can we be going up but going down? What's happening here? And so I wanted to urge the council, as you cast this vote, to be, make a greater effort, a clearer effort, to explain the problems you face, the complexities of city finance, how many loans you've got outstanding, and what their implications will be for the future, so that citizens don't get the sense that there's so many shells moving around that they really don't know what's under any shell when they're in Times Square. And I get that feeling sometimes, and I try to pay a lot of attention to city government, but I know that I feel, in this particular case, I don't feel overtaxed, but I feel, I recognize that many of my neighbors feel the impact. One thing that is also important, I think, to explain to the public is the impact of constraints, constraints although well-meaning and appropriate, on the amount of revenue you can bring in due to the ceilings on increases in homesteaded property. And that may be a part of what is leading to this downfall. A good intention means that the overall property tax burden is sadly falling upon landlords who have tenants, and those tenants don't get the benefit of a property tax exemption, and so they wind up feeling the full brunt of this increase as those increases in taxes are passed on in their rent. So I'm concerned that we do a better job, and I would urge each of you individually to do a better job, in this evening, at the next budget hearing, and on an ongoing basis, in explaining to the community exactly how we got into this situation, why we're here, why this seeming disparity between increased economic activity that we all see and the sudden need to raise taxes, all coming at the same time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lisa Lorenzo, and then Cynthia Harris.
Hi, good evening, and thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you regarding this issue. I am a homeowner, myself and my husband, in College Park on Oak Street, and we have been a homeowner for just a few short years. I came today to briefly discuss the impact, which is challenging, on this proposed tax increase. For us, we're already paying over $5,000, but yet we have a small bungalow with a carport. We do not have a fancy home with a pool or all these things, but we're currently paying over $5,000 a year. So already steep to be able to live in the City of Orlando, but now the tax rate would be over $400 more a year additionally. And that, again, for us, is quite substantial. Life is expensive, as is expensive for you, but I'm very concerned about the 17.7 percent increase. It just is significantly a lot. And my concern also stretches to the homeowners collectively, because every single time that the city needs money, I really don't want to see you dipping into the property owner's pockets. Because having conversations with people in College Park, some people are questioning, am I going to be able to stay in my home long term? I know my husband and I, at our ages, are questioning that. Also too, are we going to need to move outside into the vast suburbs of the City of Orlando? Because City of Orlando is no longer going to be affordable with the taxes. And instead, my final comment is, I'm very concerned, when I drive around Orlando, the vast number of apartments and the rapid increase in apartments. It has become a major industry here in Orlando. And all those people you are not tapping into have taxes in that way. So again, the homeowners who are left, that are not renters, are the ones that are taking the burden of your needs, basically. Whereas if it was a City of Orlando tax increase, then anyone, whether it's a renter, a homeowner, or a tourist, would be paying into the pot. It would be more fairly, you know, distributed. So I would love to see an alternative plan, such as possibly raising the tax, something like that, you know, where it affects everyone and not just that the property homeowner. Those of us who are left keep the burden and are responsible for the sole burden. Thanks so much for any of your consideration. We all really need your help on this. This is a lot of money. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Cynthia Harris, and then Charles Hickey.
Good afternoon. I'm here today to speak on my opposition on raising the tax. Right now, the people that are low income, middle income, feel like this is a game of monopoly. We feel like we're on Baltic Avenue, and we've been shifted to Park Avenue in a matter of zero to 60 seconds. In our community, there are flooded streets, there are sewers that are backed up. If you go to West Moreland and South Street, every time it rains, it floods. But where are our tax dollars when our streets need repairing or just some relief from the flood? This happens every time, and it has gone on for years. In 2008, you increased the millage rate, and it was at a time when the economy was going into a major no-stiff. But right now, no one has considered, the people who sit on Baltic Avenue, that when they take two steps forward, they're going straight to jail, do not pass go, do not collect It's not fair that no one has taken the time out to study. You spent $21,000 to study the Performing Arts Center, but no one has taken the time out to ask the people in the community if this is going to affect them in any kind of way. You've heard others speak earlier as to the taxes being raised, and there's no relief. We need some relief, and we need you, the City Council, to lead by example. There's been frivolous spending, there's been reports of how City Council has spent discretionary money, as well as other funding. Demographics have been used to gain money. But we also can go back to the venues that have been brought into our community, and no one has looked at the fact that, just a month ago, I said, consider maybe doing a special assessment on ticket sales. That could help offset raising taxes on low-income and middle-income people. That's something that maybe you need to sit back and consider with your financial staff, with your financial team, in order to help relieve the burden on the taxpayers. Yes, we are growing slowly, but to hit us with a tax increase as significant as this is really deplorable. It's shameful that we don't have the opportunity to sit back and study. You took the time out to study any venue that you wanted to when you decided to create venues in this city. How about take the time out and study what goes on in the community that we elected to serve us? We need you to be our voice, but we don't need to be hurt. We sit on Baltic Avenue, not Park Avenue. We need our streets repaired. We need our sewers cleaned. We don't want garbage back into more garbage. So I'm asking you today to reconsider the millage tax that you're planning on voting on. I'm asking you to reconsider listening to the people out here, because it hurts us each and every day. Every day, we are suffering, and if we can't move forward, the city can't move forward. What good is a venue when you don't have people in it? Thank you.
Charles Hickey, and then Luanne Gelsner.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Appreciate the opportunity to come here, and Commissioners, to come here and speak to you all. You know, just some background on this. By the way, my name is Charles Hickey. I'm over from the Lake Nona area. Mayor Dyer, you've been, you know, helping this community since 2004, and it's been a very long time, and it's great that we have such an experienced leader to guide us through all these years of good years, bad years, and hopefully getting better. Commissioner Gray, you've joined us, and for a few years, you've been our district commissioner, and you've been a good friend of the Lake Nona area, and you've come out to many of the events that we've been very vocal about, school rezoning and things like that, and so thank you very much for that. You know, I think, you know, as the comments have been hearing, the rate increase from last year to this year, 17.7 percent. You know, it goes in, throw in another 2 percent for home values, so the home value on your line item is 20 percent. That is very significant. I mean, it's significant for you guys to get a budget, to get that money. It's significant for us in order to pay that, you know. But it's also very surprising in the fact that you look at that tax bill, and you look at all the other taxing authorities, and they either stayed the same, went lower, or had a very, very small increase whatsoever. So, you know, everyone else is saying, we're going to make do with what we've got, and the City of Orlando says, we need this. And that's, you know, very drastic and alarming, and I think that's why people are coming out to talk about this. You know, the budget shortfall has been going on for some time. You know, this isn't new. We saw the home sales coming down in 2007. They went up real fast, and then they started coming down. You know, year after year, we watched those home sales drop, bankruptcies, foreclosures, all that stuff was going on, but you guys didn't go and look at any millage rate increases. You know, and, you know, Mr. Gray, you were not on during that time, so, you know, that's okay, but Mr. Mayor, you were. You were on during this time when those things, when those revenues were coming down, and you fell back on the reserves, you know, which is like, all right, well, we got a sharp decrease in the reserves, we're going to fall, or in the income, we're going to fall back on the reserves. But what are we going to do? Because this is going to, you know, it was forecasted to last a while. What are we going to do? What are our plans to start doing that? You know, and we do have these large projects going on around town, you know, and we found unique ways to try and fund those and put those in the budget, but there are indirect costs associated with these things that I don't think the city has been looking at. You know, the city has not been billing GOA for the indirect costs, and I think it's gone back to 2007, and that's in your budget plans. That, so why aren't we billing the airport authority for, you know, six years, seven years? Now, we're not billing them for the indirect costs associated with providing them services? You have a local business tax that, I believe, has not been increased for eight years. Why not? You know, new construction, as it goes in, we sell these lands, and we put all these buildings in there, whether it be commercial or residential, they have a burden on our resources within the city. So I don't think you guys have really looked at the impact of those and properly assessed the value or the cost associated with that, to where maybe the impact fees need to go up for those new buildings and those people coming in, because they're drawing a lot of resources and money to go and fund those expansion of the city. You know, they also, the airport itself, and expanding, it's using resources, you know, fire personnel, police officers, those types of things, and those people are over there, and they're causing indirect cost to the city. You know, so we step back a little bit, and we say, all right, well, what has the CPI been doing? Well, if you add all that up, it comes about 11, 12 percent. You guys are asking for 18 percent. So, you know, we got the rate of inflation, you guys are asking for more than that. And I like the idea of the one gentleman who talked about, you guys have been stretching the dollar and all of a sudden, snapback effect. And I think that's very true with what you guys have been doing. But let's look at how we govern ourselves around, you know, locally and also in a statewide. So I live in a community that has a homeowners' association, and we assess fees, homeowners' fees in there. We're not allowed to go and raise our rates more than 10 percent without the entire community voting on that and saying, hey, is that acceptable or not? community voting on that and saying, "Hey, is that acceptable or not?" And most of the time, you can't get enough people to say yes to something like that. But that's, and that's not done by the boards that run those, it's done by the people that live there, the owners. So we say, "All right, well, let's not worry, you know, maybe as a city, you're not gonna look at homeowners' association and how the citizens govern themselves. Maybe we'll look at state constitutional amendments on homestead exemptions and us going in and limiting that to ten percent." You know, so there's a lot there that says the property values can't be assessed more than ten percent. So again, that ten percent number is coming up the play. And, you know, you're going in, you know, and then we got the rising millage rate, which you guys have the authority to go ahead and raise that rate, sure. But is it within the spirit of what the state was trying to do with these homestead values by saying, "We're not gonna allow that assessed value to go up more than ten percent because of the rate hikes that people are gonna see"? So, I mean, you know...
Thirty seconds.
I'm sorry?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. So I'm asking, you know, the city has actually failed to assess things properly and given favoritism to the GOA and the construction projects and the large developments, not on those, the city is skirting this ten percent rule that we like to see within our assessments. And so with that, I'm recommending that, you know, I'm okay with a tax increase, but something less than ten percent, and if you need it more next year, maybe come back and let's go through this again, but I'm against what you guys are trying to ask for this time around. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Luanne Gelsner.
Luanne Gelsner, seventy-six, seventy-four, St. Stephen's Court, zip three-two-eight-three-five. It's a pleasure to be here before you again. September twenty-third, two thousand thirteen, last year at the budget hearing, I spoke on some concerns about the budget, and I was concerned about the city and the financial situation that was upcoming. On October the seventh, two thousand thirteen, I brought before you this check that literally got me arrested, and it was a blank check issued to Buddy Dyer and his buddies, issued by the City Council. At that time, it was for the soccer stadium land purchase, but my concern was, it was coming from the city internal loan fund. Why am I talking about that when everybody's talking about raising your taxes? See, when I purchased my home, I couldn't borrow any money from my friends or my parents. I had to show I had my down payment. But what is happening with the Sunshine State Government Finance Commission and others that we've uncovered? I need to just say, when we do a public request and you deny me the information or you give it to me, I already know the answer. We're borrowing money on loans. That's not good. Our credit rating is not triple A for all of our bonds, maybe three of them. I asked for that last week, and I still don't have the answer. Why am I speaking on this? I am speaking on this because we're at this situation because I believe poor judgment has occurred when it comes to the City Council and the mayor of Orlando. Land purchase, the venues, the impact, BBI, environmental issue, I can go on and on. We leasing office space in the arena for five dollars, one dollar a year for different organization. It can go on and on, but why am I talking about now our Avalon taxes? See, I believe we shift money like for our public use, our employees. Now we're gonna increase our Avalon taxes, the property owners, because we are using these other dollars because I believe the city wanted to avoid a public vote on the venues. I believe that. I've been asking for information for an entire year. So of course I'm against you increasing my taxes. Unlike the young lady in College Park, mine is over five thousand dollars, and my increase will be twenty-three percent because some of our homes' value is going up. That's a lot of money for me. I'm on a fixed income. Regardless of the fact, we're on fixed incomes, but I'm speaking because I have constantly come before City Council, and I've questioned the motives of your votes on issues. Why are we taking care of the venue, the one percent of the one percent? I feel like I'm a broken record. But now, you're messing with my pocketbook more than ever, and I don't think I should fund your mishaps, your misappropriation of funds, your kickbacks to your friends. I can call it corruption, that's what I believe, but not on my back anymore. You have to have ample enough time to fix some of these problems and to come to the community. See, a year ago, I said you were having financial problems. You waited till the vote went through, and then all of a sudden, you got financial problems. That's not fair to the citizens. So the reason why we're up here and speaking, and thank God it's not the same ten people that normally come, it's different people, it's because we're beginning to see there's a pattern here. And the pattern is, you want us to bail you out, and I don't want to bail you out. I want to sit on board and make sure it's gonna happen properly, but past history has indicated to me, maybe you just expect to get a blank check, and here it is. This is my last. Anytime Buddy tells the City Council to jump, that's the date. A blank check for Buddy Dyer's and his buddies issued by the City Council. For what? The Orlando Villas and any other projects? But now it's off the backs of Orlando taxpayers, and that's not fair to us. So I will close by saying this. When I ask for the information, stop the games, people. I have the budget, I went through it. Avalon taxes, has it been shifted so you could avoid the public vote? I think so. Our city workers didn't get but a two percent increase last year, and they probably won't get but a two percent increase. We got a freeze. We've been promised, promises, unkept promises. Our streets and drainages, you've heard it.
Thirty seconds.
We've been waiting. But in closing, I'm looking for it, Mayor Dyer. I do have your credit rating, and it's not a triple A. Never doubt that a small group of committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that has ever done, has ever happened. That's by Martha Mees. So I'm saying, it's not how many people showing up, we're just beginning to question your ability to make the proper decisions when it comes to our tax dollars. So no more blank checks for the City of Orlando. No more blank checks. Thank you.
Okay, that was all of the requested appearances from the public. So, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Commissioner Stewart.
Let me, did we just have a year, so I have to?
Ah, okay.
I gotta do it every year, I apologize. As you know, I've served for many years Executive Director of the Christian Service Center for Central Florida. The budget for this year and many years prior to my service on the City Council has included funds that provide a modest grant to the center. The amount of that proposed funding for this year is twenty-two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. None of that money goes towards the general operation of the center. These funds, however, will not be granted to the Christian Service Center unless and until the Christian Service Center and the city enter into a separate written agreement. Such agreement will come before the City Council for individual...
He sounded like he's mauling.
That's okay, you guys can read it in the minutes next time. Such agreement will come before the City Council for individual approval. At some point in the future, I want to make it clear that when this specific item comes before City Council, I'll abstain from voting on the funding agreement between the city and the Christian Service Center, and will fill out the proper required documentation noting this information at that time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Some of you can understand that. He runs the Christian Service Center, and at some point, we will be voting on funding for the Christian Service Center, so he will defer from voting at that point. All right, anybody else then, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you read the title of the budget resolution?
A resolution of the City of Orlando, Florida, adopting the annual budget of the City of Orlando, Florida for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand fourteen, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Sir, motion to adopt the tentative budget for twenty-fourteen, fifteen. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan. Second by Commissioner Engs. Rebecca.
Mayor, Commissioners, the total proposed budget is one billion, forty million dollars, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one, including a general fund budget of three hundred and seventy-two point one million. There's been only a few changes to the total amount compared to the overall city budget presented in the July twenty-eighth budget brief. These adjustments are typical fine tuning that occurs, and also one more major change was to include the anticipated revenue as a result of the millage adjustment. And so those are the numbers that we have at this point.
Okay, is, do we have any appearance cards, additional appearance cards?
No additional, Mayor.
Hold on, you may continue. Can I turn it over to the board, Mayor?
If anybody else wants to speak again, turn in another request, please.
All right, Mayor, I just found out something unique and different. Hi, Controller. If you made any changes to this budget, when were they made? Because I actually have a copy of the budget, and I would like to know, I picked this up today, when the changes were made, where are they available, and is there a presentation? Because now you're voting on something that the citizens haven't had the opportunity to see. And for those who don't understand, I'll say it over and over again, I know I go above and beyond the average citizen, but when it comes to the finance of the city and understanding how the business of the city is ran and questioning your behavior as far as public input, public requests, when we do not get fully disclosed the information, it appears that you're hiding something from us. I will give you the benefit of the doubt, because last week, I went to your audit meeting. I couldn't make it to your pension board meeting, but I go to your meetings to get the information so I can share it with individuals. If it was changed, it had to be changed Thursday or Friday, because I just got this. And if it's changed, you should let the citizens know prior to today and just overhearing it. That's just not good business, Mayor Dyer. So whatever the adjustments are, can I please pay you my additional five dollars and get those adjustments so I'll be prepared for the next budget hearing meeting? I believe it's a week from now or two weeks from now? So I'll see what those are compared to this budget and the next budget. Thank you.
Rebecca.
Once again, I'd like to reiterate that the budget that you are considering in this has been posted to the agenda. It has been public. If Ms. Gelsner went online to get budget information attached to this agenda item, she would have gotten the corrected information. I will reiterate, when we presented the budget in July, we presented it with a, I guess, a budget gap that was to be filled by your decision to raise the millage. I did not want to be presumptuous, because I'm sure I would have been probably criticized for being presumptuous. We were not presumptuous about the tax increase happening, and so as a result, we have included that, and that is essentially the change. On the expenditure side and the general fund, there were no changes.
Okay, so it just added the revenue from the millage increase. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right, we're gonna move to the second of our public hearings. So this is the first of two public hearings for the adoption of the millage rate and budget for the Downtown Development Board for fiscal year twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen. At this first hearing, City Council will consider for adoption the proposed millage rate and tentative budget. At the second hearing, City Council will consider for adoption the final millage rate and budget. Madam Clerk, would you read the title of the millage resolution related to the Downtown Development Board?
A resolution of the City of Orlando, Florida, establishing for the Downtown Development Board the ad valorem tax levy millage rate upon the assessed real property within the Downtown Development District of the year two thousand fourteen.
The proposed millage rate for the DDB for fiscal year twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen is one mil, which is point six-seven percent lower than the rolled-back rate of one point zero-zero-six-seven. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed millage rate for the Downtown Development Board? Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Rebecca.
Mayor, Commissioners, the City Council on behalf of the Downtown Development Board has set a millage rate of a dollar per one thousand dollars of valuation. Similar to the city's millage rate, this rate was submitted to the property appraiser by the August first deadline for the trim notification process. The millage rate is within the parameters outlined by the state formula and has not been changed from the prior fiscal year. The total, that's it, sorry.
Madam Clerk, any requests for public comment?
No, Mayor.
Discussion among the board? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you read the title of the budget resolution related to the Downtown Development Board?
A resolution of the City of Orlando, Florida, adopting the annual budget of the Downtown Development Board for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand fourteen, and ending September thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Rebecca.
Mayor, Commissioners, the total budget for the Downtown Development Board is three point five million dollars. That's the same amount as included in the overall city budget as presented in the two thousand twenty, or in the July twenty-eighth budget and brief. There have been no budget changes since that date that have been made.
Are there requests for public comment?
No, Mayor.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right, next public hearing. This is the first of two public hearings for the adoption of the millage rate and budget for the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District for fiscal year twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen. I guess this is the first time we've done this. At this first hearing, City Council will consider for adoption the proposed millage rate and tentative budget. At the second hearing, City Council will consider for adoption the final millage rate and budget. Madam Clerk, would you read the title of the millage resolution for the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District?
A resolution of the City Council, the City of Orlando, Florida, and the Board of Directors of the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District, levying an ad valorem tax at the rate of one dollar per one thousand of assessed value on non-exempt real property located within the jurisdictional boundaries of the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District, providing certain findings, providing for administrative millage adjustment in accordance with Florida statutes, providing for the collection of taxes, providing for severability, correction of scriveners, errors, repeal of conflicting resolutions, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. The proposed millage rate for the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District for fiscal year twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen is one mil, which is one hundred percent higher than the rolled-back rate of zero, because the millage did not exist last year. Let's see. Rebecca.
Okay. The City Council on behalf of the Downtown South NID has set a millage rate of a dollar per thousand dollar valuation. Similar to the city's millage rate, that rate was submitted to the property appraiser by the August first deadline for the trim notification process. The millage rate is within the parameters outlined by state formula, and as a new district is an increase to provide for administration of infrastructure projects within the district.
Any requests for public comment, Madam Clerk?
No, Mayor.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yeah, one quick question, I guess probably an administrative question. We have adjusted the boundaries of the South Orlando, the South Downtown NID, and did that, the figures that are addressed here, are they also reflected after that, making that change?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay.
These are updated.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Further discussion, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you read the title of the budget resolution relating to the same subject matter?
A resolution of the City Council, the City of Orlando, Florida, and the Board of Directors of the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District, adopting the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget for the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District, providing certain findings, providing certain budget accounting procedures, providing for severability, correction of scriveners, errors, repeal of conflicting resolutions, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. Rebecca.
The total budget for the Downtown South NID is three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That is the same amount as included in the overall city budget as presented in the July twenty-eighth budget and brief. There have been no changes since that date.
Are there requests for public comment?
No, Mayor.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, so the motion carries. Without objection, we'll recess the City Council meeting and convene the Board of Directors for the Downtown South Neighborhood. This is the first of two public hearings for the adoption of the millage rate and budget for the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District for fiscal year twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen. At this first hearing, the Board of Directors will consider for adoption the proposed millage rate and tentative budget. At the second hearing, the Board of Directors will consider for adoption the final millage rate and the budget. So we're doing the same thing we just did, but we're doing it as the Board... So we're doing the same thing we just did, but we're doing it as the Board of Directors of the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District. Madam Clerk, would you read the title of the millage resolution?
A resolution of the City Council, the City of Orlando, Florida, and the Board of Directors of the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District, levying an ad valorem tax at the rate of one dollar per one thousand of assessed value on non-exempt real property located within the jurisdictional boundaries of the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District, providing certain findings, providing for administrative millage adjustment in accordance with Florida statutes, providing for the collection of taxes, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, repeal of conflicting resolutions, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. The proposed millage rate for the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen is one mil, which is one hundred percent higher than the rolled-back rate of zero point zero zero. Rebecca.
The Board of Directors for the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District has set a millage rate of a dollar per thousand dollars of valuation. Similar to the city's millage rate, that rate was submitted to the property appraiser by the August first deadline for the trim notification process. The millage is within the parameters outlined by the state formula, and as a new district is an increase to provide for administration of infrastructure projects within the district.
Madam Clerk, any requests for public comment?
No, Mayor.
Discussion among Commissioners, hearing none, or actually, I guess, we're Board of Directors in this case. Any discussion among the Board of Directors, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye? Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, the title of the budget resolution, please?
A resolution of the City Council, the City of Orlando, Florida, and the Board of Directors of the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District, adopting the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget for the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District, providing certain findings, providing certain budget accounting procedures, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, repeal of conflicting resolutions, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. Rebecca.
The total budget for the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District is three hundred and seventy-five thousand and thirty-eight dollars. That's the same amount as included in the overall city budget as presented in the two thousand, or the two thousand fourteen, July twenty-eighth budget and brief. There have been no budget changes made since that day.
Madam Clerk, are there any requests for public comment on the tentative budget?
No, Mayor.
Discussion among the Board of Directors, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye? Aye. Those opposed, so the motion carries, and without objection, we'll adjourn the Board of Directors for the Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District, reconvene the City Council meeting simply to ask Rebecca, is there any further business, or May Ann? Is May Ann even here? There she is.
The only thing that I'd like to point out, sir, is that we have the second of these two budget hearings at five oh one next Monday, September fifteenth.
Okay, and we will give appropriate accolades to your staff at the second hearing.
Yeah, one other thing, I did want to point out that there will be an advertisement this Thursday in the newspaper with regard to our millage.
Commissioners, anything further? Commissioner Stewart, are you putting your light on or off?
No, I was just turning the microphone off.
Okay. All right, then, without objection, we're adjourned, and we'll convene next Monday for the second hearing.